Yeah.
Well, with the state setbacks, I don't know if they would, somebody would have to buy land. I don't have money for it. Somebody that's got land to run, other setbacks, eight years of school.
Well, there is an, probably half the idea of how they're managing.
Right.
So it's one hour over, or maybe not. And so it's like, you don't need a big building.
Yeah.
I would have been all that.
I feel so far.
Two thousand two hundred and four. Instead of twelve hundred?
Oh, it's about twelve hundred is supposed to bring up to.
No, 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 this is what the, the original permit that we pulled out, that's what they said to be what open permit.
Yep.
We had to revise that permit.
So you're in there.
Yeah.
That permit is for twenty five. But it's boring the water main. Oh. Oh, and that because we would have changed our, what we're gonna do, right? We were gonna.
No, anything to change is the.
All your good business.
Or something like.
I can get it very easily.
Yeah, yeah.
So. I'm gonna stop. So, has that checked? Has the new one been kicked off?
It was just a little secret, I found out that that in the back.
Okay. Well, yep.
Yep.
Before you take the ticket.
You ready?
Yeah, that was good, thank you very much. Yeah. Darren, yes.
Oh, you did kind of.
Oh, um.
My album finally died.
Oh, no fun.
So, I tried to get a new battery for it. Can't.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's like, kinda. Yeah.
Do you have a, a dream or that?
Well, you're, I, I have a vote, but if there's.
This was the program.
I heard that. What doesn't change in like.
Okay.
It's a problem.
It is.
When they get time to.
It's worked more.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. That's, uh, they come from. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a little, uh, so.
Okay.
A lot of, uh, cheeks in the seats tonight.
Uh-huh.
Which is nice, a change.
That's a little intimidating, but it's good.
Mics are on?
Mics on.
I'd like to call the city council meeting of March fourth, twenty five, twenty twenty five to order, will stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One nation. One nation.
Alright, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Looking for a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, any further discussion? I do have a, um, one thing to highlight, uh, council, the Northside Improvements DNR permit has a fee of twelve hundred dollars. Uh, that is inaccurate, the total will actually be two thousand two hundred and fifty, it'll be pending receipt on, uh, uh, from that to, to be changed. And that's because of the style of piping, or what we're doing, um, on that section of road, uh, that the wrong fee was, was first suggested.
Can we elaborate?
Yes, please, yes.
Yeah, so, um, when we initially filled out the permit for the utility crossing underneath the Sway Brook Creek on Third Avenue.
Right.
Um, the, the, the permit was filled out incorrectly, and we needed to up, make that correction, and when we made that correction, um, they came back with that larger dollar amount for that fee, for that permit. And it's the same, same permit we have for the sanitary sewer, right next to it, just, we replaced the sanitary sewer back in nineteen ninety, ninety-four, yeah, so, we need one for the water main now.
Why the increase? Because of the size of the pipe?
Um, the original permit was filled out as, as a, the water main was a service, not a main.
Okay.
And it's a larger fee for a main versus a service.
Okay.
Now, that being said, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Looks like we're gonna open it up to, uh, mayor's comments and open forum, uh, so if you are, there's some folks on the list, um, we'll have you step up to the podium, uh, state your name and address, uh, and take a few minutes and, uh, share with council.
Hi, city of council, this is Debbie Erickson at six hundred Dewey. Um, from the last meeting, uh, Sarah Brun had mentioned, um, that property owners on that north side are required to plate, replace their service laterals as part of the project. And that this has been required during other projects, personally, um, the two thousand and eight, it wasn't required on the project that I was involved. Um, also that, um, the city is going to start assigning fines if people don't change out their service lines. And so, how can a blanket statement be made like that? Because service lines include communication, gas, electricity, water, and sewer. So, is the city having an inspector go out to see if those service lines do indeed need to be replaced? Versus just saying you have to replace it? Um, that statement should be changed or elaborated a little bit. And then, is the city giving a copy of the certified inspection report to each of the owners? Because a lot of people just can't afford to replace all of that. And so that becomes an issue. The other one again, I'm gonna bring up about the parking. And so, as you notice that, I've been bringing this issue up since two thousand and eight. And people have requested a four-way stop sign at Fourth and Dewey. Well, if we would be in compliance with Minnesota statute in regards to parking, that's ten feet away. Let me get that, so twenty feet from a crosswalk intersection, thirty feet from a stop sign, ten feet in front of a fire hydrant. And there, it's allowed almost right up to the fire hydrant, it's right up to the crosswalks, right up to those stop signs. That will help it a lot. And because, you know, right now, we're having a reprieve during the planning phase of the new county building. But once that new building is complete and most of the departments are brought back under one roof, that's gonna bring more cars to the area, creating more issues with parking, especially in concentrated area, just with the county building. And so, within a four-corner area, I've given out my own personal little parking violation and warnings, at least one to two every week. And that's where we have our parking designated areas, so these are people not in compliance. And the poor police department can't be everywhere. But the city needs to have the markings to be in compliance. And then the third thing I did wanna mention is, um, kudos in the city of Foley getting the Main Street grant. Understanding that you have your own application process, and you'll make recommendations to the GSDC. But how's the money gonna be used? Is it gonna be for the facade improvement, or is it gonna be for the city purchasing property? So that's a question to be answered in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, do we have anyone else on the list?
Uh, yes, Cindy Claude.
Again, uh, state your name and address, and, and take a few minutes to share with council.
Well, my name is Cindy Claude, and I live at one zero zero five Ninth Avenue in Foley. I have a couple things that I'd like to bring up, first off, I'd like to bring up, who checks the, the, what did you put in? That we were wrong on, the.
The permit?
Permit.
That earlier?
Who checks your permit?
Who checks my work?
Yeah.
Uh, internally, we have the Kiwi C C process that checks those.
So that's who caught it, or who caught the mistake, 'cause now that's quite a bit of money, correct?
I, I mean, the difference, I guess, would be, the amount would have been the same regardless if it was, you know, who caught it or not, it would, the city's not charged extra because there was a mistake, I guess. It was just, that was the permit that needed to be filled out for that, for the project.
But we put a permit in and it was twelve hundred dollars, and now the permit came back to twenty-five hundred dollars. Right?
Yeah. Yep.
So there is a difference. Because we didn't fill out the permit correctly.
Um, it's not because we didn't fill out the permit correctly, is why, I mean, it's increased because of what was needed on the project.
Right, service.
Not 'cause it was, not 'cause it was incorrect the first time.
Service line versus a main line.
Correct.
That's what you said, so they cost different.
Yep.
And you had service on your, on your.
Original application, yes. Yep.
Right, it, it's unfortunate that they caught our mistake, we could have got away with less, but the fact remains, that was the price, and that would have been the price regardless. So, it didn't cost us any more money.
Well, no, but, but you're talking about twelve hundred dollars, and now it's coming back as twenty-five hundred, that's my point. So it is more money.
Right, it would have been that price regardless, though.
So now I wanna talk about cats in the city of Foley, it's spring, they're coming back out.
Sure are.
Um, do we have money set aside for bringing the cats to the Humane Society, what's the city's plan?
To be determined.
To be determined.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna start trapping soon.
Working with. Great, I, I, anyone's allowed to do what they would like.
Right, and then I'm gonna bring them to the Humane Society, and I'm gonna say I live in the city of Foley.
Yep.
And then you guys are gonna pay for them?
To be determined.
Okay. I'd also like to learn a little bit more of, uh, how we charge for water.
That's something we could, we would have offline, we wouldn't have that conversation during open forum.
Okay.
Yeah?
Well, that's all I have to say.
I'd be happy to talk to you about that, yeah, absolutely. Sarah, anybody else?
No, that was it.
Alright. Moving on to department reports, uh, let's see, Katie McMillan, chief, we'll start with you.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you received the stat report for the month of February, we had three hundred and twenty-nine calls for service for February, I mean, it was a short month, so they are down a bit compared to other months. Um, you can see some things to point out, driving conduct, that is the, we've been focusing on stop signs and the, um, stoplights, and getting the people who violate that, um, people driving without a driver's license, th- those are up. Um, deaths are also up, and we're watching that closely, um, one of them is at a business, and it was three of them, all in one shot, so, we're trying to watch that. Um, medicals were down, domestics were down, which is good. Um, when, parking tickets, a reminder that winter parking is still on, and that goes through the end of March. And as you can see in the miscellaneous section, there is seventy-six, and that's up compared to last month, that's because we did, we have to do it twice a year, but predatory offender checks, so that's included in there, where we have to do those twice a year, where we go and make sure that everyone is compliant on their forms with the state. Other than that, um, we just had, um, we served breakfast to the elementary kids today, and we will be going back Thursday. Um, I don't know, that is all we have, I believe, so. And, do you have any questions for me?
Our squads.
There.
There.
They are, the two thousand nineteen squad is, they were able to get us by for now, where we don't have to pay for the vacuum pump, so they saved us over six hundred dollars, since we're gaining, since the new one should be here within the next month or two.
Yep.
And so, um, you can probably, the brakes are still squeaking a lot in the twenty nine, or the twenty twenty-one, um, but they've, we had two different places changed out the brakes, and it's still the same issue, it's a Chevrolet product, so, there's nothing we can do for that.
Hard to fill, uh, TZD hours?
Yes, um, in February with, over Super Bowl, they were going to do it, but then we had that snowstorm, so, that canceled theirs.
Keep pushing for that.
Yes, yep, definitely.
Good thing we have the backup squad.
Yes, very much so, yep, we're using that quite a bit.
Good. Uh, thank you, Chief McMillan, uh, City Engineer Jared Griffith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, tonight, just got quick updates on our two projects we got going here, uh, our twenty twenty-five, um, street construction project, bid opening is scheduled for, uh, the twentieth, we're still on schedule for that. Um, and then our lead service project, we plan to be submitting those, uh, plans to Department Health this month. That's all I got, unless you have any questions for me?
Uh, nope, it looks like Mark will help us with the wastewater, um, thanks Jared, uh, Mark, Public Works and Fire.
Good evening, uh, as we get going, uh, could I ask the fair to have Jacob Humbert from Bolton Mink, Principal Engineer, he's gonna give us an update this evening on the status of the Saint Cloud.
Yep, excellent.
Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, so, as Mark said, I'm Jacob Humbert with Bolton and Mink. Um, you should have been provided a memo in your packet, I believe, um, hope you've had the chance to read through that, I'm kinda gonna summarize, um, status update on the wastewater project, and in particular, some of the issues, um, that we've been dealing with in the last couple weeks. So, um, as again, gonna run through the memo, but on February tenth, we were first made aware that, um, the Saint Cloud neighborhood near the Foley connection, uh, to the system was experiencing some ordering gas issues, or had been, um, for at least some time. Uh, we're working to identify kinda everything that's going on in that area, um, as well as the system as a whole, but as of right now, you know, us Foley and Saint Cloud are all collaborating on this, it appears to be kind of two separate but related issues of both air movement, um, in that portion of the system where we're connecting to Saint Cloud, and why the air is being pushed, uh, in the direction it is. Uh, and then the other probably more significant concern is the levels of hydrogen sulfide, uh, that we're seeing at that end, um, that appear to be, you know, related to, or, or coming from Foley wastewater. Uh, this was a relatively new issue to us within the last three months, um, again, we're still gathering a lot of information on it, and, and working on, uh, both, you know, determining exactly what's going on in solutions, but, um, they appear to be related, uh, both in some degree to the extreme, the period of extremely cold weather, um, both in terms of the gas movement and freezing up normal outlets, locations, roof vents, um, for gas to escape. Um, and then as well as the, the H two S piece with the Foley ponds, with them being completely frozen over and stagnant. Uh, in terms of next actions, or I guess actions already underway, so, currently we're not, Foley is not pumping to Saint Cloud, um, Foley, Saint Cloud, and we are working on, on again, resuming that as soon as possible, um, but Saint, you know, we want to ensure that, you know, first, first and foremost, everything is safe, and, you know, Saint Cloud has concerns right now about the H two S issue, so we're mainly working to get on top of that before we, um, slowly restart and, and monitor everything within the system. There's daily meeting taking place between us and us Foley and Saint Cloud. Down at the Saint Cloud end, uh, there's temporary venting of additional infrastructure to improve, um, air and gas movement into the environment, we've also observed that, that, that problem appears to have lessened with the recent warm weather. Uh, and then again, just continuing to investigate into the, just the conditions that are causing this within the system, um, to, uh, work ultimately on solutions. Uh, Saint Cloud has also come over to the Foley side as assisting, they'll be setting up, um, for the restart, they'll be setting up some additional temporary chemical feed, um, at the, at the Foley, uh, the Gulf ponds specifically. Um, and the next steps will be a planned, planned restart of the system with that additional chemical feed, adjustments to the, the, um, current chemical feed on the system, and then the monitoring of, again, hydrogen sulfide. Future, uh, actions, the, that would be the development of long-term solutions, to make sure that we're not dealing with these problems long-term, and, and select the best options.
Any, um, idea when this is actually gonna be addressed? When we'll be up, back up to working?
Yeah, I, I don't wanna make a promise on that, we're, we're working, you know, in the short term, we're working to, to come up with a plan to restart the system. I would say at the very latest, in the next two weeks or so, I, again, I don't wanna promise, we wanna make sure that we have things squared away, and that, you know, first and foremost, what we're sending to Saint Cloud is not gonna cause them major issues.
Has other cities had this problem in the past?
Hydrogen, I mean, essentially the answer is yes, I mean, both, both air movement within the system and, and H two S gas are, are always present with, with, um, sewer, you know, there's always the potential, um, Foley is a very unique system, so, you know, some of the things we're learning about the system and the force main, and, um, the potential for that formation, and how to deal with it, you know, it's, again, I'll say it, it's, it's very unique in the way that it operates, you know, the, the long pipe and everything, so.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jacob. Other than that, unless you have questions, I don't think I have anything specific for you tonight.
You, you wanna buy anything? Nothing?
Not this month, that's right. I haven't had time, we've been living, we've been living in, uh, Jacob, I.
In pipeline?
In pipeline.
Uh, well, thank you, uh, I understand the, the, you know, pipe situation, I'm glad everyone's working together, um, and I would say for a project this large, for not a thing to, for everything to go off, not a hitch, would, would have been rare, um, I'm glad we caught it now, and that we're working towards it. Uh, as we just started the, the pumping, uh, not too long ago, uh, so hopefully whatever resolution we come up with is a long-term resolution, and it's, and it's something we have to, uh, not really worry about, uh, going forward, so, um, better now than later, so thank you for that. Uh, I've got nothing on the agenda for old business, unless there's something that, uh, council has.
Got nothing.
I did talk to Rough Start, if we end up going with Purple Cat, and they said they would try to take some of the cats, because of course, when they surgically sterilize them, they can't just throw them out the door. And they said we would try, unfortunately, it depends on how feral they are, because their philosophy is get them adopted. And they could make no definite cast in stone, they have said they're, have been problems with spay neuter and release. And they're sort of major problems.
Sure. Okay. And we're waiting to hear back from them, and their discussions with Sarah, as well as, uh, negotiations with Tri-City Humane Society, and so until at which time we have those conversations wrapped up, we make decisions as to, as to what that looks like. Anything else? Old business? No? Moving on to new business? Uh, nothing on the agenda, is there anything new? Not hearing any.
Can we ask about the bomb threat?
Uh, it's an on, it's an ongoing investigation, so there's not a lot.
Nope.
To, to be able to be discussed. Um, you know, but certainly, uh, great job by, uh, Foley PD and, and what they did to help, uh, rectify the situation, as we know it's scary, and, and, uh, you know, so regardless of what, of what came of it, um, thankfully, nothing, uh, no one was injured, but is there something you'd like to speak to otherwise?
Yeah, uh, just what, um, went out in the press releases, all that I can give out at this time, 'cause it is an ongoing investigation.
Yep. Um, but great response, um, and nothing was handled really well, uh, and thankful that no one, uh, no one is injured, and nothing's, uh, come of it in that way.
I have total confidence, chief, that you will find out who did it.
Thank you.
Great, well, if there is, uh, no other, um, actions, I'll, I'll make, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion is made and seconded, any further discussion? Motion carries, or, all, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, uh, motion carries, meeting adjourned. From a workshop session, is there anything you guys wanted to discuss as far as our list of things goes?
Uh, yeah, actually, um, we had a discussion last week about the corner, uh, um, custom relation.
Yeah.
I mean, how do we feel about that, I don't know if we all talked.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm still trying to learn about that, um, it's no lo, it's not, it's not listed for sale anymore, I don't know, I don't know, my resources haven't been able to determine what's going on, or, or if it's already pending, or purchase agreement, or such, um, but, you know, yes, right, now, especially now that we have this, you know, opportunity for Main Street grant funding.
Yes.
Um, that, uh.
So, with that, with that funding, what would be our priority?
Oh, um. I don't know, I, you know, I mean, obviously we have a lot of things that we're trying to figure out with, uh, regards to, um. Possibly purchasing property.
Uh-huh.
Um.
And, and which ones, I guess?
And, well, and, well, yeah, that's, I think that's to be determined, too.
Right. Right.
And I think after the TIP meeting will be a good.
Yes.
Yeah.
Will, will lend itself to a good conversation about, uh, what, what, uh, potential, um, you know, TIP districts.
Are we on or off?
Still going, 'cause it's so, it's still open meeting.
No.
Uh, you know, uh, there's still opportunity to, um, in some ways, uh, fund downtown facade, and possibly further improvements, you know, a lot, some of the buildings that aren't selling, aren't selling because they need.
Along with.
Lottery repairs.
Yeah, along with the parking issue, you know, that, uh, the planning commission will be addressing, you know.
Oh, yeah. Right. Um, yeah, then I, I can't recall if, uh, I'm trying to recall the, the Main Street grant, if it can be used citywide, or if it has to be, uh, specifically for downtown. I, I can't recall, um, but, you know, obviously we're trying to do some opposing things as well.
Right, right.
Um, I just can't, I can't exactly remember the Main Street grant, if it's downtown, or certain, or certain districts, um.
The facade was downtown, but the grant, I think, is, I, I, I thought that was citywide, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
The, the first wave of Main Street grants for like Saint Cloud, for example, was specifically for downtown, um, and then Saint Cloud itself came out with a downtown, uh, facade improvement plan, similar to what we did.
Right.
Um, where, you know, where it was city-funded. Um, so, yeah, I think maybe more to come on that, and I think, uh, Amanda from BEP would be a good resource, too, to just leverage as to, um, what kinds of projects maybe, um, would, would fall under that. Uh, but, yeah, nevertheless, taking advantage of, uh, grant funding to, um. Uh, but yeah, nevertheless, taking advantage of uh grant funding to um help improve. Business, residential, economic. Outlook uh is, is great. Um, and I know there's more too that uh is being worked on with regards to additional. Funding for the, for our downtown facade improvement plan. With the, uh, however, they can't, we're trying to make it so, you know. We're trying to investigate to see if there's a possibility that it can be used for improvements inside the building.
Yes.
Uh, but there, I think there's some caveats with that original grant when it, when it came, so I think they're working through what, what exactly we can do with it. Yes, I mean, exciting stuff and I think we're all going to the meeting next week, is it next week?
Yeah, Thursday, next week.
Yeah, next Thursday, um, and, and, you know, uh, it'll be good information on uh TIP and tax abatement. I don't think we have the list up there, but.
Fireworks.
No, I'm just looking at the dates. Is that on the thirteenth?
Thirteenth, was that, that, is that two, is that next Thursday?
Yeah, next Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, it's next Thursday then, for the, for that meeting.
So then we would talk about our findings on the next council meeting then.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yep, I'd say we probably have more to, like, more in-depth um of a workshop, workshop session.
Yeah.
About, uh, you know, TIP, tax abatement, opportunities, maybe even know some more about the Main Street grant and, and what that can be utilized for. You know, possible property acquisitions or if there's any interest there. Uh, and, and of course what we would do with, with those properties uh as it relates to, to TIP, tax abatement or other projects. But, I mean, yeah, I mean, some exciting things happening, you know, with, uh, in town with the winery almost completed, we've got, uh. Right, the, the medical clinic that'll be breaking ground here, probably in the, uh, probably about two months. Uh, I think we go into weight restrictions here Friday.
It is, uh, another thing I had is, uh, of course we got a letter from Hans about the time capsule and. I, I don't agree where the time capsule should go, I believe it should go on city property.
Yeah, I think, I think, I can't, I heard that from somebody else, uh, but yeah, I would, I would agree that it, it seems more relevant. Um, for it to be located in a, in a, in a different location. I'm not a time capsule expert, I don't know what that would look like or, or how that all goes, how that all goes together, but. Nevertheless, that's, uh, only a few weeks away as well.
Along with fireworks, where we.
Oh, we have a poll.
Yes, we did.
So that was from the poll, so good. Uh, some decent, uh, some decent traction, hundred and responses. Fireworks, uh, you know, my, in some conversations I've had with, with folks, uh, they enjoyed being able to, to chime in. I'd say I had a lot more people inquire or, or ask about doing something outside of Foley Fun Days. As more of a, you know, a true celebration, you know, like a, like a block party of sorts. You know, I think the hard or the challenging part with that is who's going to plan it.
Right.
You know, that, that's uh not to be taken lightly. My only thought I had, if we, if we wanted to explore that option. Would be to perhaps uh piggyback off of uh one of the thriving um communities or thriving initiatives with the, uh, like movie in the park or, or party in the park.
Yeah.
Um, you know, where maybe we could add or bolster that event by doing more during that event and also having fireworks maybe at the end of the night or what have you.
On a weekend, you know, I think that would help.
Yeah, we, well, a weekend would help, um, I think those, I think those are already, those particular events are already planned and I think they're Thursday nights.
Right.
Thursday nights, oh, well, the Oktoberfest is planned on a Saturday.
Yep.
So I guess there's, there's, there's opportunity there, I guess, as far as the weekend goes, um, there's no, no rules dictating what month it happens in. You know, as far as celebrating a hundred twenty-five years, so that's, I mean, I, I wouldn't mind exploring that. Um, just to give it a little bit more of a, a special feeling of celebrating versus it tying into or being a part of Foley Fun Days. Any, what are your thoughts, I don't know?
The only thing that, I mean, fireworks are okay, but I think, uh, one thing we do have to uh think about is our veterans. When it comes to fireworks and PTSD that they do suffer from. I've had conversations with uh veterans and they still, it is, it is a shock, so I think we have to be considerate of that.
And I personally have been in town, so they've had fires when their fireworks were going to be safe. One was in Lead and it went twenty thousand acres. Um, I have a problem with fireworks, I love watching them, I mean, I'm not adverse to watching them, but unfortunately. We do not have stable climate conditions, we cannot count on a wet summer. And we don't have a lake, we don't have a source of water.
Mark, where was the, do we have an ideal position to let them off? Not really, do we? That's my thought.
Probably have to be over somewhere, wait, dry years not going to be good.
Right.
Eastern ponds.
Yep.
I was in Texas, Southern Texas over New Year's, and they light off big fireworks, which were, make you go to jail around here, they did this for eight hours. In McAllen and Far Jackson, everyone's in one fire, Texas is a big grand, that's a real grand valley, but that was, I mean, that's a, that's a whole lot different. Climate down there, it's a lot drier, there's a lot more sagebrush and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and stuff like that, and there was no fires anywhere in the vicinity, so. Like sometimes it's a matter of luck of the draw, because I couldn't, hey, I couldn't believe that they spent that kind of money on fireworks, their own citizens do, I mean, it was, this is eight hours of fireworks, I mean. They didn't shut it down until three o'clock in the morning. So it was pretty impressive, pretty impressive what they do, and that's a heck of a dry climate, so, I mean, anything can happen, don't get me wrong, but.
Right.
Unless, uh, a dry summer, unless it's abnormally dry drought conditions, I.
But then I've lived in Clearwater and as a family and, and we lived on a lake as a family. We had lit out fireworks over the lake, but the little bit of wind took it to the neighbor's field. And that was a lot of families that were scrambling to put that fire out, even though we had a lake, so, it, it's a luck of the draw.
It is the like of the, luck of the draw, unfortunately, if your card comes up, it's not pretty. It's expensive, people do lose homes, we don't get that until it happens.
Good, good discussion on, on fireworks, uh, I mean, that's something we can still entertain, uh, all the more reason maybe though to entertain, uh, doing something. Beyond or different than Foley Fun Days, uh, if, if we, if we in fact. Decided not to get on the fireworks route for whatever reason, uh, you know, one of which could be, you know, funding, obviously is another, is another aspect of that. You know, you know, it's not free, uh, surprisingly cheaper than I, than I was expecting, but, uh, still, still an expense. So something maybe we, you know, as we, uh, I, I do anticipate our next meeting being a little bit of a longer meeting. But we're going to want to probably dive in more into that on what do we, what do we actually want to do? And if we want to explore, you know, possibly doing something or making it a larger event, uh, and adding things to it. We, you know, what does that look like and, and can we, can we leverage the folks that are already on that committee to help? Help with that planning, uh, as we know, that's a, that's a big undertaking.
Okay.
Wait, can I ask a quick question? Would the city consider collaborating with an event for, like, my nonprofit is working on. We missed the deadline for the um arts grant for funding or whatever for like community events for this year, so I'm working on getting all the details together for next year. But I was hoping to be able to do uniting all types of art and do a community kind of concert and bring a lot of the resource providers or current service. Providers in the area, but just doing a community event at the end of August, so I was either looking at the last Friday or Saturday. But that would be, I was looking at Holdridge, I think it was Saturday, I reserved the park already tentatively, so I would. So that's my goal or, or vision for that, but again, with limited funds, that the city would be willing to kind of partner. With a nonprofit that's here to help the city anyways.
I entertain you presenting maybe what exactly you were looking at doing, um, I mean, just to see what, what that looks like and, and how that could fit. But, you know, kudos to you too for doing an event, I think, I mean, any events, uh, obviously in the community are great, um, and, and I think people look forward to those, so thank you. Anything else from the workshop session?
Uh, Dog Park, it says any options for off-leash area?
Yeah, well, we, we've talked about that, well, we've talked a lot about Lions Park with everything that's happening with the pond and what could that look like, you know, we'll say in the next one to three years.
Yep.
Not to say that there's not plenty of space in other areas of town.
My dog runs running out there.
Yeah, at the Lions Park?
No.
Holdridge?
At the compost.
Oh. Because there's that decent sized area in Holdridge that they could go run in theoretically off-leash, but then it's.
I'm a little leery on that.
Yeah.
Because of the liabilities to the city.
Oh, yeah.
Talking about with or without fence?
Without fence.
Yeah, right, liabilities without fence versus fencing it in, yeah.
Even if it was fenced in, there are still too many liabilities for the fence when you have too many dogs, I mean. I, I think we should, my, my suggestion is we just pass on that for now.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't, I don't know if it's, uh, so, yeah, nothing I'd probably remove off the table in, in its entirety.
No.
Uh, but I, I don't know, again, with so many things happening in, uh, Lions over the next, I'll say a couple of years with the pond and then. You know, we're talking about play equipment and, and removing some stuff out of, uh, Holdridge possibly and what that, what that landscape would look like. I just think that, yeah, as far as options of what that blank space looks like, you know, um, there's that, there's also talks about bringing back a baseball field and. And, and what else can you do with, uh, with Holdridge Park to, you know, help tie in the use of that park along with, uh. One of, what I feel is our greatest, uh, family amenity is the pool, so. Let's see, and then.
Design standards.
Design standards? Yeah, I.
This should go, I, I would send this to planning, absolutely.
Planning and zoning, yeah, and I think rightfully so, um, and, and there's a lot of cities, uh, you know, we take examples from, I think we're seeing it more and more as. Uh, whether it's certain, certain colors that can be used or even materials to a degree, um, you know, I, I especially felt that way if we're. We're helping support and beautify downtown, you know, should we have some standards in place, uh, so that, um. You know, we feel good about the things that are being done, especially with, with that money. You know, how far that reaches, I guess, you know, with the planning and zoning maybe, but something certainly, uh, I mean, I think St. Joe is a good example. Um, and I know they're more than willing to share their, their copies of that, what that looks like and how they, how they came to those arrangements, but. Brainerd, Brainerd Backstreet area is another, another big one. Time capsule, yeah, we covered that, Google form results, um, and then, and then the chickens. So, you know, it's kind of like the dog park thing, I, I don't think chickens is something that is forever removed off the table, I, I. I still think we have some other things to worry about.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we have a cat and dog problem, for example.
Exactly.
And that'll be a chicken problem too.
That we can't keep under control. And, uh, as well intentioned as everyone that would seek chickens would be, um, it's unfortunately. The neighbors that are sometimes the bigger problem, and that can be, you know, dog eat my chicken, chicken poop in my yard, no one cleaned out the chicken coop. Someone's got a.
Rooster.
A rooster instead of a chicken, yeah, or a, a egg laying chicken, I don't know, so there's, um.
It's coming up because of the price of eggs, but this is temporary and, you know.
Right, well, and, and I, and I don't know how ma, I don't know how many, and I would entertain, and I would certainly entertain anyone who would want to come in and, and. But it would, but it would have to be like. Not, not the four or five people that might have chickens, I'm, I think we need to have more than that, uh, we would need in, uh. We would need a lot of community support, I, I think, for it to be heard loud and clear, um. But absolutely, I, I think there'll be a time where we'll have a dog park, we're going to have chickens. I just think we need to, uh. Lay the path to get there.
I will admit, I wanted chickens, and then I started doing the research and it just, for me personally, it just seems like more work than it's actually worth.
Right, I.
I have enough going on.
I, yeah, I don't.
So, so do you have any ordinances against quail? I know there's like bylaws or if there's loophole within the laws against chicken and other, um, you know, farm animals like that.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll have some things dug around in that, I can't remember if we've talked about quail, they're delicious, um, yeah, I know that about quail, but I don't know how it relates to our ordinances, so.
They've been falling into that, I believe it's under livestock, but.
Under the, oh, kind of like a.
It's in the livestock ordinance, I read that pretty thoroughly the first time I wanted chickens.
Yeah, other, other people are circumventing that too, so.
I'm sure.
Nothing against chickens, nothing against the price of eggs, nothing against people that want to practice farming, I get it. Um, uh, but, yeah, I, I, I don't know if the price of eggs all of a sudden warrants a unanimous change to the, to the chicken ordinance. Especially for how much, actually, yeah, how much work actually it is to have chickens.
Well, then I think that we would have to actually probably staff somebody to go do chicken coop inspections and make sure they're.
We wouldn't have to, people I'm sure would call.
Yeah, well, correct, but then somebody's going to have to go and address them. And I feel like Katie's got enough going in this town already.
At some point, we're going to have to, we'll have to discuss probably a, uh.
A second officer?
What do you call it, a dog and cat or, uh, what?
Animal control.
Animal control, you know, uh, which is a whole nother expense in itself, but. Um, okay, so that's the things on, uh, from the workshop, right, that was everything?
Yep.
Anything else, uh, from the workshop, goals, priorities, things that weren't covered or that you'd like to add to the list? Now, our list is getting pretty big, but it's good to talk about them.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
I think, uh, for the record, I think everything will. As far as, um, planning, once we go to the TIP meeting, we'll have a better understanding and, uh, a focus when we come out of there. So we can.
Yeah.
Where do we want to go?
Yeah, they'll help tee up.
What can we use, what do we want to use?
Help us tee up what we want to, what we want to look for, um, you know, it'll also give some, some. For like EDA and the planning and zoning as well, uh, you know, what it looks like from, you know, like TIP and tax abatement, planning, planning and, and design standards as well as, uh. Even parking.
Yep.
You know, speaking of parking, right, uh, we know that our downtown is not conducive, uh, for, for parking, um, uh, and. I'm, I would imagine the downtown landscape will change here in time with, um, uh, multi-use, uh. Buildings being constructed, right, to be determined, we'll see, but we'll need to figure that out. And parking just in general too from a, uh, when a building is being constructed or added on to. Parking ordinances follow along with that and sometimes they're counterproductive, um, and can, can hurt or inhibit the project or the business to begin with. And made sense maybe then, but what does it need to look like now?
Good, and, and with that, I mean, I think, uh, the tavern, you know, I think that by demolishing that building. And making that a parking lot would be a step in the right direction.
Sure.
For downtown, for other amenities.
Yep.
At least they'd have a decent place to park.
Yep, yep.
I was going to say, can that, can you wait, I want that building. I know you're going to demolish it.
You can, you can look, you can look at it, but.
I know, I walked through it six times.
So, so have I, with many. So, so have I with many people.
Yep.
And no one wants it.
I do.
But I, I mean, I, I hope somebody does something with it before it just falls over. Good.
So I'm curious of why you say to make curious tavern a parking lot when we have an open spot by the VFW or Legion and across the road from there that is already open?
The, the Legion owns that parking lot. It's, I mean, now, now they may have let people park there, you know, but if all of a sudden it filled up with people that like live downtown, well, all of a sudden it's taking from people that actually are trying to patron there.
Right. I didn't know Legion owned that. I thought that was the old corporate and I thought that that.
It was, yeah, yeah. Legion, Legion acquired that lot. And then, I, I mean, someone owns the lot across from that too technically. You know, and so, and that's kind of the idea behind, you know, cities buying properties is it allows for them to be able to, you know, kind of control and, and, you know, make changes as they need to, to accommodate. Well, that being said, I know I mean, we don't need to adjourn the meeting.
No.
We just need to be done. And then Cindy, if you're, if you're able to hang around for a little bit longer, I'd, I'd love to chat with you.
Have we heard any moving forward on the pot issue? I'm not hearing anything except they're starting to have.
Yeah, I'm hearing a lot of, a lot of changes.
That's Benton County.
And it's not just Benton County. That's what's.